Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, in the soul, liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November 16th, 2021 meeting of the Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors. Before the start of this regular meeting, the board met in executive session. We discussed a manager's contract, and we will be moving on that next meeting when her contract will be presented to us for a formal vote. We also discussed two items of real estate we need to purchase to easements for the Chapman Road Bridge improvements, and we won't be moving on those tonight.
No.
Okay. All right. Now, we go to the point of the visitors or public comment, and I understand there is public comment tonight. Is Mr. Senavitis here? Mr. Senavitis, you may take the podium, please.
May I have it off?
Okay.
Could I?
Yes, you may. And when you speak, Mr. Senavitis, if you wish to take your mask off, you may do so, if you're comfortable doing so.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bill Senavitis. I'm a teacher at Tooeeke Middle School, and I'm president of the Central Bucks Education Association, the union representing about 1,300 professional staff in the Central Bucks School District. I'm here tonight to discuss the propaganda that Nancy Santa Cecilia distributed to educators in multiple buildings throughout Central Bucks School District. She's been positively identified on video accessing the Central Bucks Inner Office Mail System in early October and using this school district resource to spread misinformation to employees. While it is unclear if she's the author of this material, Mrs. Santa Cecilia acted alone when she distributed the flyers via Inner Office Mail and was not on school district property in any capacity with CB Cares when she did so. I understand that she has since resigned from her position with our education foundation. I can't speculate as to what goal Mrs. Santa Cecilia was hoping to accomplish by aiding in the distribution of this material, but I can speak to the outcome. It made people feel uncomfortable in their workplace, as if some anonymous person was monitoring their beliefs and affiliations and questioning them about it in a manner that was not productive or kind. The contents of this printed propaganda distributed by Mrs. Santa Cecilia are similar to a video that's circulating in the community that slanders not only the character and good work of CB Cares, but attempts to shame students who may wish to read books that function as both mirrors and windows in their own world. These actions sadly prove that she is part of a group actively working to drive a wedge between our staff and our community. While so many of us are working hard to bring a sense of normalcy back to our schools, one of our elected township officials was engaged in actions that were and are a distraction from teaching and learning. The recipients of this mailer and all involved organizations are owed an apology by actions and by words from Mrs. Santa Cecilia. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comment? I need you to identify your name and where you live, please.
Good evening. My name is Jim Mollnary, James W. I'm a lifelong resident of this school district, having graduated from CB East. For the past 26 years, I've been a resident of Doylestown Township. My wife and I raised our daughters in this community. Both girls attended CB Schools, and I'm happy to say graduated from CB West, although I went to East. Thanksgiving was always fun. Currently, I'm in my 34th year of teaching in the Central Bucks School District, and like many of you, I'm clearly invested in this community. I'm here. Been here for a long time. That's why it is incredibly heartbreaking that one of your members chose to put some garbage into my mailbox. To see such vitriol and hate on public display in our community that I love. First, we would just push it off as being on social media. That's social media. Now, it's at school board meetings, township meetings, and now it's in my mailbox. Upon arriving at school a few weeks ago, I checked my mailbox, and I found your propaganda letter in it. See, I was one of those educators one of your fellow board members targeted. All I ask is why? I'm your neighbor. I'm from the community. I'm here for the greater good. Maybe I coached your son in baseball or taught him in school, saw them at church. Have I done something to offend you?
Mr. Mollnary, excuse me. We have rules of how public speaks to the board, so please don't address any one board member in particular, but address the entire board, okay?
This person, whose name rhymes with fancy, trespassed on school ground, committed a theft of service to make sure this got in my mailbox. I can't imagine why anyone would want to attack teachers during this time. We have done everything possible to teach children in a safe environment in person. In fact, today was a good time for me. We sat in shutdown all day because I teach next to CB South. And it's fun for my colleagues to explain why there's 30 school buses in my lot because we were a staging area, but other people found time to put this in my mailbox while we're taking care of your kids. I gotta tell you, it's not what good people do, and I ask you, it's time to do better. It's time to speak up against this kind of garbage. And I will call out, Mrs. Lyons, the rest of the school board, because it's time for you to become upstanders. It's something we teach in elementary school, standing up for others. It's amazing that we ask a seven-year-old to stand up for others, but we don't expect the very same thing from adults. Good people here in our community need to say that we've had enough of this hate spewing. It's not about politics. It's not about being a Democrat, Republic, Independent. It's about good people. Let's do better. And I'm sorry, Mrs. Lyons, I'm gonna break your rule because I respectfully ask for Mrs. Santorelli's resignation. Doylestown deserves better. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you. Other public comment? And let me just now pull out the rest of our rules, and they're not my rules, they're this board's rules. We adopt them every year at reorganization, and these rules are not only how we conduct meetings and how we treat each other, but how the public is to function within the confines of public comment. And they are, we limit to two minutes if we have to, because we have a big agenda tonight, so I'm gonna ask everyone to limit their comments to two minutes and try not to repeat what has already been said. We ask also that we accept the common rules of courtesy, decorum, and civility, and we don't resort to personalities or use abusive, intemperate, or defamatory language. Okay? Can everyone go by those rules, please? Thank you. And the next person, please identify your name and where you live.
Good evening, Mrs. Chairperson Lyons.
I'm sorry?
My name's Karen Smith.
Oh, hi, Karen Smith. I didn't recognize you behind your mask.
Like the other speakers, I'm here tonight because of the recent misuse of the Central Bucks School District Inner Office Mail System to send an offensive and libelous mailer by a Doylestown Township Supervisor. Although I am a Central Bucks School Board Member, I'm not here tonight in my official capacity as a board member. When I first learned that the district Inner Office Mail System had been exploited in this manner, I was angry. To think that someone would abuse their access privileges to our district, to a public school funded with taxpayer dollars, and use those public resources for this purpose? When I eventually learned of the identity of the culprit, however, I was absolutely stunned. You see, I too work for an education foundation in Montgomery County, and prior to that, I worked for a statewide education association that supported school public relations professionals, many of whom manage education foundations. The relationship between a charitable organization like an education foundation and the donors who support the organization is based on trust. As an employee of an education foundation, I cannot fathom damaging that trust with an action like this. Even more inconceivable is that the action took place in the very school district the education foundation serves. The people and organizations who were libeled with this mailer deserve an apology, and I think the township deserves a resignation. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else? Sir? Yes, you.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, you're the only hand I see raised.
What was that?
You were the only hand that was raised.
I'm sorry.
That's quite a raise.
It's nice to see you all. My name is Marty Gillen. I'm a 20-year...
Hi.
Hello, Barbara, nice to see you.
It's been years.
Stephanie, nice to see you. I am a 20-year resident of Doylestown Township, and like many in this room, both of my daughters went through Central Bucks Schools, Lendapie and CB West, and I retired six years ago and have now been driving a school bus for Central Bucks for the past five years. Best job I ever had. Couldn't support a family on it, but it's still the best job I ever had, and it's a great job for retirement. I'm a member of the Central Bucks Transportation Association, represented by my fellow members over here, and I guess my question is, or not question, but my concern is, is there a code of conduct for Doylestown Township Supervisors? In other words, I know in years past supervisors did have to resign because they broke the law, and I'm not up to date on what law may have been broken with this, but it's pretty deceptive and pretty deceitful what this person did. But if there's not a code of conduct for the Doylestown Township Supervisors, there should be, and if this supervisor broke any laws, I would think that resignation is definitely in order. So thank you for giving me a chance to speak to you all. Nice to see you again.
You too, Marty. Thank you.
Hello. My name's Michelle Wire. I live in Doylestown.
What's your address, Michelle?
It's Ferry Road.
Sorry?
Ferry Road.
Ferry Road, thank you.
And I won't need the two minutes. This'll be very short and sweet. I'm not going to replicate what everybody has already said and the disgusting trash that arrived just to me today on my desk. I want to be clear that that kind of activity does not represent your community. It doesn't represent the diversity that we are fighting for every day and the people that are representative, are represented by everybody here. It's filth. It's disgusting, and it breaks all of the rules that you all just asked us to abide by. And I also want to make something else very clear in two seconds. I support the Rainbow Room 100% and Marlene Prey. It saves lives. I've seen it on a weekly, if not daily, basis, everything that Marlene puts out for this community and the children in it, and we will fight to the death for her and for the Rainbow Room to remain.
Okay. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Danine Dry. I'm a support staff nurse at Central Bucks, and I am president of the Central Bucks Education Support Professionals. I'm in Chalfont.
Would you please repeat your name?
Danine Dry.
Got it.
Thank you. Sure. I don't have anything prepared to say, but I'm sitting here infuriated over the actions of your supervisor. I didn't receive the mail to my work address because I'm support staff. I guess I wasn't important enough to get it there, but where I did receive it was to my home, and it was disgusting, and it was filled with lies, and the only reason I was sent that was because of my union position. All political, political lies and things that we should not be tolerating. I also want that supervisor to understand that my members did her dirty work. She dropped off the mailings, but my members were the ones that had to put it and transfer it to the school buildings, and it were my secretaries, my members, that had to put it in mailboxes. So those actions caused us stress and anxiety over political nonsense, and that minimum, not only an apology, but a resignation is warranted. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Hello, Marlene.
Hi, Barb. Good evening. My name is Marlene Prey. My pronouns are she/her. I'm the founder and director of the Rainbow Room, a member of the Executive Committee of the NAACP, former board member of CB Cares Educational Foundation, and a former Doylestown Borough Council member. I'm here tonight as a resident of this community and a parent of a Central Bucks School District student and a target of the hateful letter. The Rainbow Room is a program which saves lives. It saves the lives of some of the most vulnerable children and youth in our community. The NAACP, which was also maligned in this letter, is an essential and historic civil rights organization. Shame on you for characterizing these efforts in the way that you did. I don't know if this person compiled the hateful letter that was mailed throughout the district and led to your immediate departure from the CB Cares Educational Foundation. If it wasn't you, you could certainly clear that up, but we know it was distributed by this person. This person mailed hate, racism, anti-LGBTQ attacks throughout our community. You attacked the Rainbow Room, which has been the LGBTQ+ Youth Center here in Bucks County and here in Doylestown for 19 years. The Rainbow Room saves lives, children's lives. Shame on you. Shame on you.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you all for coming. Thank you for your comments. Does any one of the members have to say or need to say anything at this point?
I'd like to say a few words. I just want to be clear. I am personally severely troubled by the racist and anti-LGBTQ+ flyer that we're discussing right now. This flyer utilized fear of people of color taking jobs from others and attacked an essential resource for the LGBTQ+ youth in our community. It's unacceptable that any member of our community that is willing to incite division and harm the lives of children to gain political advantage. I condemn the actions of those who brought disgrace upon themselves in an attempt to stoke division in our town. The Doylestown I love celebrates diversity and supports all our children. I must believe that I share that sentiment with more of my neighbors than not. That's all I have to say.
Anybody else of the members need to say anything?
I'll try and keep my comment short. This letter that has been given to us and talked about tonight is, you know, it's disgusting. It has no purpose in Doylestown and in trying to foster the community that we have been working towards since I've been on the board since I elected in 2019, started in 2020. So the amount of upheaval we've seen in this country and in our own community, this is a step backwards for it. I can't speak for Mrs. Santa Cecilia, but I will say thank you to those who came to share your views on it. It's much appreciated and helps give me additional context for this and what our support staff for the schools and our community are dealing with. So, thank you.
When I talked to Mr. Senavitis on Friday, he just learned of this, and I just learned of this, I told him that the Board of Supervisors cannot force a resignation of any one of our members. They're duly elected people to this board. I can't ask Nancy to resign. We can't ask Nancy to resign. She'll take her own counsel to make that decision or not. It's her right to do so, and I'm not going to comment any further about Nancy's actions. However, I will say this about my actions. If I had done something indefensible and it became public scrutiny and it affected this boardroom, I wouldn't be sitting here right now. I would already have resigned. If there's no further comment, we're gonna get on with the regular business of this meeting, and thank you all for coming.
Oh, come on, Ryan, say something. You're better than this.
Well, I'm happy to say something. That was... It wasn't... Barb just... I'm happy to speak and planned on speaking, and Nancy, I shared this with you. Just, you know, I'm going to be... I'm not gonna call on Nancy to resign. I share the sentiments of Barb. I spoke to you, Nancy, before this meeting in full disclosure. I did not... I was not really following and was not aware of any of this until the last couple of days. Nancy, and I will speak directly to you, Nancy, like I said to you on the phone, what you did was unethical. We can skirt around the issue of the legality of it, but what you did was wrong, and you accepted that and shared that you accepted the accountability for what you did was wrong. I'll let you speak for yourself. I do feel that you owe the people here tonight something. I'm saddened by what I see happening at the school board meetings. It's a sad state of affairs in Central Bucks right now, and to see that it's now trickling over into Doylestown Township and, you know, again, this is disruptive to the work that we have to do. As Barb said, we've got a full agenda tonight after this. We'll be here for hours making sure that this township is kept safe, that we're doing the right things, and we've always acted in accordance in that. I've been on this board for 10 years, and I've never faced an issue where a board member has done something that has been an ethical dilemma. We're faced with that tonight, and I'm not bound by any party affiliation. If this was Barb, if this was Jen, if this was Dan, I don't care if you're a Republican or a Democrat, you gotta do the right thing, and I told you that, Nancy. If you have... You have to do things in the right way. If you have issues with something, you have to do it respectfully, and you have to... Like, I appreciate that all of you got up here tonight and shared your thoughts in a respectful manner. I appreciate that you brought that, and that was very important to us for the decorum of our boardroom to stay intact the way it always has been. I don't have the solution, but what happened was wrong. What you did was wrong, and I think that you owe the people here tonight a chance to, you know, explain yourself. I mean, share your thoughts. You know, I don't agree with it. I don't want you guys to... Don't take my silence for... Yeah. Exactly. I don't condone this behavior. I don't condone it. I think it was wrong. I told you I thought it was wrong when I called you earlier tonight.
Right. Well, what we're not gonna do after this is have a debate, okay? So let her speak, and then we'll be done, okay? Fair enough?
My actions were my own. It was never intended to impact the township, which... So I apologize to my fellow supervisors for the hardship that this may have caused. In terms of any type of communication, there was never meant to be harm but awareness. In terms of the actions...
Come on now.
Let me finish. The actions of others and what is happening, and people need to pay attention because of the children, the parents, and the community that are being deceived. And I've been advised, that is all I can say, but there is... Thank you.
All right. You have to take the stand, the podium. Sorry, Carol. You know what I mean.
And you will be sworn in. I'm Carol Shelley.
And I live in Doylestown Township. And is there a mechanism for removal of a supervisor who has engaged in conduct that is arguably criminal? Is there a mechanism to remove a supervisor? I know you said you can't ask her or force her, but is there another mechanism?
If a supervisor is convicted of a crime, they can be removed from office.
Is there any type of crime, like misdemeanor?
No, it depends. It's a misdemeanor, criminal felony, which means fraud and so forth. Doesn't mean you were drunk driving or you did something lesser like that, but clearly there are criteria for removal of supervisors, and it requires a conviction as opposed to an allegation.
All right. Nothing further, folks. Thank you again for coming and for speaking and being so respectful of this room. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Senavitis. All righty then. Announcements. This board's next meeting on Tuesday, December 21st, at 7:00 p.m. We're gonna be closed Thursday and Friday, November 25th and November 26th for Thanksgiving. Leaf and Yard Recycling is the first and fourth Tuesday from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., as well as the third Saturday of each month from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Drop-off site is the New Britain entrance to Central Park. Okay, we got some boards and committees openings. Agricultural Security Advisory Council, Environmental Advisory Council, Friends of Kids Castle, Public Water and Sewer Advisory Board, Veterans Advisory Committee. We all, you know, those are all openings for volunteers to those boards and committees. Park and Recreation is hosting a new event. Visit with Santa Saturday, December 11th, from 2:00 to 5:00, in Central Park Pavilion Number One. And also, Park and Rec is sponsoring Jolly Jammy Jam with Mrs. Claw on December 17th from 6:30 to 9:00 p.m., and that is where... Where is it?
In this room.
In this room. Thank you. All right. The P&amp;R Department donation and Park and Rec Department is also sponsoring a local Twilight Wish Foundation drive to benefit our seniors in this community. It's gonna continue through December 17th. There's a list of items found on DoylestownRec.org, and these items can be dropped off here in the township building, and we'll make sure that they get to the Twilight Foundation for our seniors. Okay, and finally, that's it. Oh, we also have gift-giving ideas. This is like, you don't have to go far. We can... You can buy gift certificates, Park and Rec programs. You can plant a tree in honor or memory of someone right here in the township. Bike and Hike Path has trail benches. Bike and hike path has trail benches. There's a mural print you can buy, dogs around Doylestown posters, awesome bricks at Kids Castle, bricks at the service memorial, bricks at Dog Park, and some leftover township commemorative versailles. Okay. Next item of business is the approval of the regular meeting of October 19, 21. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any questions? Corrections? Hearing none. Calling the question, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
I'll abstain. I wasn't here.
Thank you. One abstention. Next is approval of the budget work session minutes from, or notes from October 19, 2021. Is there a motion to approve these work session notes?
I'll make that motion.
So, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Nancy was at that meeting, so... Okay. Next item on the agenda is a non-uniform employee defined contribution pension amendment. Mr. Solicitor?
If I may, at the request of Township Finance Director and in consistent with the agreement between the township and ICMA Retirement Corporation, I prepared the appropriate resolution effectively approving a new relationship between the township and ICMA. Ken, you want to add anything? It's relatively vanilla.
Is that a no, Ken Wallace?
Yes, it is a no.
Thank you, Ken Wallace.
It's, it's, it's not like it's a, how can I say? It's not a significant action on your part. But every action isn't significant for you folks.
And Madam Chairman, the board will recall that back on July 20th of 21, you did adopt the new guidelines and documents with ICMA RC.
Which is referenced as Exhibit A. Okay, thank you. So, a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Celine, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, Police Chief.
Yeah, just a quick update on where we're at with the accreditation process. As you recall, back in June, the board authorized me to contract with LEAS to assist us with our accreditation process with the hopes of becoming accredited in May of 2022. We've been working with LEAS since June on 139 standards established by the Pennsylvania Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission. That's a tongue twister. To date, our policies covering the 139 standards have been reviewed and amended where needed and have been found to be in compliance. This part was relatively easy considering for the last several years I've been saying that we've pretty much been following these standards and that kind of endorsed that theory. The time-consuming part of the accreditation process is a collection of proofs which are required to show the department is following our policies and these standards. Each standard may require one or more proofs to show that the department is actually following the internal policies and meets the accreditation standards. The proofs can be as simple as providing a copy of our written policies, photographs of areas of our building, or written police reports that showing that we're actually doing out on the streets. I'm happy to report that we are currently exempt from 14 standards that deal directly with court security and colleges or university procedures. Other remaining 125 standards, we have, are full in compliance and provide all proofs for 100, excuse me, 82 of the 125, which means that we're still working on 43 of them. We have provided some of the proofs, so we're moving along. We're currently ahead of our May 22 target date, which I'm happy to report. We have a tentative date with the accreditation board in January for a mock assessment and hope to be assessed in late February, early March would give us full accreditation. So, that's where we're standing.
Is that a party or how, how's that happen here?
What's that?
Is that a party? I mean, do they come and do some kind of...
My plan is number one invitee will be Steve White.
Okay, there you go.
You're number two.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, we're ahead of schedule and...
That's awesome.
I thought we would move along, so we're doing well.
Proud of you. Proud of the department. Thank you.
Lieutenant Ziegler's in the back. He's been coordinating a lot of this stuff, so I give him a lot of the credit.
He told us when he started this accreditation thing that you were going to be doing it. You know, he's going to take the credit, but you're going to be doing the work. Thank you, Lieutenant Ziegler. All right. Anything else, Chief?
That's it. Thank you.
Township Engineer?
Nothing to report at this time.
Okay. Director of Operations, you got a couple things?
Yes, I have a few items for the board to approve. Annually, we advertise for snow rental removal equipment with operator. We put out a bid on November 9th. Three contractors submitted bids for the 2122 snow removal equipment rental with operator. They are B and E Carts LLC. They submitted for three vehicles at $125 per hour. James and Family Enterprises LLC, they submitted for two vehicles at $135 an hour. And Little Diggers Excavating in Hardscape, one vehicle at $130 an hour. I'm asking for the board's approval to execute contracts with these three entities for the 2122 snow removal season.
All right. You heard the request. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Five and O, thank you. All right. Next item?
Hey, I have one change order for our 2021 tree pruning and takedown contract. We have a deduct and two adds. The deduct is an open space location reduction in the contract of $1,850 and $1,850 and two adds for $3,800 and $3,250. The total change is a positive change of $5,200. We did some, some of these additional things are hazardous trees along property lines, along their open space that were requested by residents that we're addressing through the Parks Department. I'm asking for the board's approval to approve these change orders to the contract of Joseph McElvein Tree and Lawn Services.
All right. You heard the request. Is there a motion to approve the request?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
I do, I have one quick question. Does this still stay under our budget for this year for tree removal with this change?
I think we might be a little bit over. But unfortunately, you know, they are, they are hazardous, so we always try to address the hazardous and even at times we need to address them and they're outside the budget because of liability. So, I don't know off the top of my head. We might be a little bit over. I can check that and get back to you on that.
But you're right. I mean, I got a call with two hazards on our roadway today that you had to jump on.
Right.
You know, so it happens all the time. Okay, so there's a motion, a second. Your question has been answered. We're going to get some information next time, okay, Dan?
Yep.
Motion, second. All in favor of the question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is that five and O? Okay, thank you. Is that it, Dave?
I got two more items.
Oh, the, yeah, trailers.
Let me just flip my pages.
Double wides.
One, the, the, the third item is the extension of the trailer lease for the Park and Rec Department. As you all know, when this building was under construction, we leased trailers and that lease, it was actually an amendment to the lease. We had a base lease and then amendment to the lease for one, one term, which is a two-year term. Basically, you've received my memo and an amendment to the lease for a one-year term, 12 months. It will run from June of 2021 to June of 2022. We've looked at multiple options, which was an 18-month lease, a month-to-month lease. I spoke with Mr. Wallace, the Finance Department, as well as Eddie Ebenbach, our budget analyst, and we feel that this is the best option. It's the most flexibility when we start to complete the design process for construction of the Park and Rec Building if it goes forward and we can always go month-to-month. So, I'm asking for the board's approval to approve the one-year lease extension with Will Scott and basically execute that agreement. The lease monthly amount will be $4,421.
I can't wait for this new building to be built. Is there a motion to approve the motion, the, the action that we extend this lease?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thanks, Dave. One other item?
One more item, which I'm going to ask Matt Johnson, our traffic engineer, to speak to because we basically, as you all well know, we have a bridge in the township, a Chapman Road Bridge, that is in various states of deficiency. We've had it inspected multiple times. At this point in time, we are moving forward with the, as I can say, that the board has approved us to move forward with the acquisition of easements. We have been in contact with the county and PennDOT regarding the process to place this on the Transportation Improvement Plan, which is called the TIP. So, you have, you have a letter that I would like the board to authorize Chairman Lyons to execute and send to the county. I'd just like to have Matt explain what the process is. We've met with Supervisor Wood to explain this as well, so he's, because he's the liaison to the roads and bridges. So, if Matt would take a few minutes, explain it, where we're at today and where we're headed into the future here and hopefully this project moving forward.
Sure. Thanks, Dave. The letter in front of you is from the township to the county requesting the use of state or federal funding. It would probably be federal funding to use through the Transportation Improvement Program. There are a number of steps that have to occur. We had a good productive meeting with the county and PennDOT last month and they felt that if the township is committed to going through the process, that they would be able to find the $1.5 million that's required for construction. So, we recommend going through that process. It will cost the township some additional money, but at the end of the day, the township probably has spent money already. We'll have to spend additional money, probably total in the order of about $300,000, but then you would have about $1.5 million in construction dollars that you would not have to pay for. I guess since 2019, we've been looking for ways to fund this project and relieve the township from that burden and we think we found this. We are going to be coordinating with Baker over the next month, probably in December. You'll have a proposal from them. They had done the original work and there's just hoops that have to, to use federal fund, you got to check all the boxes and there's a number of boxes that need to be checked and they can't be done for free. So, that's kind of where we stand. If this letter's submitted, the project gets on the tip and the proposal from Baker next month, if that's approved, they would start working on it once it gets on the tip. You know, there's no sense moving forward if we're not sure that we're looking to get, you're going to get the money, so.
Okay, thanks, Matt. Is there a motion to approve the execution of this letter to the Director of Transportation for the funding, potential funding of the Chapman Road Bridge?
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
And I'm going to edit this letter just a bit, okay? Thanks.
It'll be fine. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Yeah, you too. Thanks. Okay. Manager?
Yes. You have a memo from our Director of Code Enforcement regarding our Green Points Ordinance and some building code amendments that are coming forth. We are able through the way the ordinance is set up to amend it by resolution and we would typically ask that that resolution be prepared. Mr. Salisbury indicates to me that these items that he's identified and crossed out in the thing for, in the Green Points Program for RED are now part of the general code for building codes. And in February, he's just learned that the new UCC books will be coming out and there may be even more changes. So, he actually came to me this afternoon and asked that this just be for information and that we will come back to you in February after the new UCC documents are out to see if there's any further changes to our ordinance that we need to make at that time.
Okay. Thanks. All right. Anything else, Stephanie?
Not at this time.
All right. Supervisors' comments. Nancy, you want to start?
I have nothing to say at this point.
Okay. Jen?
Not directly related to Doylestown Township, but I guess into our larger community. Just the past, I guess it was last weekend, there was a Diwali celebration in the borough and it was lovely. It was genuinely a community event. People from our township were there, so I guess I can make that connection, but it was really, really lovely and I would encourage if anybody has an opportunity next year to go, hopefully they'll run it again because it was, it was just beautiful.
And I heard Santa is coming back to town, so there's going to be the regular Santa show Friday after Thanksgiving. So, last year it was canceled.
Right.
But it's back.
That's wonderful.
Without restriction. Wow, except for, you know, what we normally would restrict ourselves to these days. So, yeah, Santa's coming back.
That's wonderful.
Yeah, thanks. I heard that. We heard that yesterday at a DART meeting. Okay, so, all right, thanks. Fine, you have anything? Do you have anything, Dan?
Just my usual plea for volunteers at the end of the month to help with the native plant garden. We had a session this Saturday expanding the garden and we'll be having the last one for the year on the 27th. So, if anyone likes to garden, feel free to come out. I was getting positive feedback at the polls on Election Day from the folks who live on Doylestown Station, just saying incredibly nice things about the work being done there. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Good work. All right, I have no comments further for tonight. All right. The next item on the agenda is the EMS Chiefs Association relief funding. There's a letter from Mr. Resnikov about his request to Bucks County Commissioners, particularly Commissioner Deidre Rollamo. Anything more you need to say to that, Stephanie?
Yes, I shared all that information with the board a month or so ago from the county. They are looking for direction from all of the municipalities regarding additional funding for the EMS services. At present, the township provides over $100,000. To kind of jumpstart a conversation, I reached out to Chief Pressler, who is the Central Bucks EMS Coordinator, and asked him to participate in a meeting because the manager from Doylestown Borough had also reached out to me. I've scheduled a meeting for November 30th at 4 o'clock with the chairman and myself to find out more about how much they exactly need to go forward.
Is that me?
Yes, you did. You and I communicated on that. I had to make sure it was okay with your schedule. I don't know if you want another board member to participate, perhaps?
Not unless somebody wants to volunteer. Hearing none, I'll do it. Okay, thanks. All right. Thanks, Steph.
Stephanie, I do have a question on that. So, going forward with this, would this essentially be a line item in our budget going next year if we decide to give them additional funding for that?
Yes, it would. We, we actually earmarked some funds. We would not be able to use the ARP money because we've already designated that, but finance is prepared to have that funding available if, if need be. They're requesting at this point $55,869 additional dollars over a three-year period. Divide that by three.
So, there, so we would have to send like some out at, do you have an idea like what time next year?
We don't. That's why we want to have this meeting with them to find out more because we're already doing $100,000.
Okay. Thank you.
So...
Okay. Anything else?
Not at this time.
Okay. All right. Tabled from last meeting was the picking the bond attorney and...
If I may, I'm sorry.
Please, go ahead.
If I may, the board asked that I solicit attorneys that are qualified to serve as bond counsel for an upcoming township financing, which will be either a refinance of our outstanding debt or potentially borrowing additional monies for the rec building. I sent solicitations to eight separate firms, received back five responses. I shared the responses with the board. All five of these firms are more than capable of providing the appropriate services to the township. They're Curtin and Heathner, Saul Ewing, Eckert Siemens, Fox, Rothschild, and King Spry. So, it's at this point up to the board to decide who you would like to select to be bond counsel in connection with the upcoming financing.
They're all good. I looked at these guys. I like not Philadelphia because you spend more in Philadelphia because of the wage tax and they get enough of our EITs, our earned income tax money. I don't want to give them any more. I looked at how much, I'm sure you all did the math. Kevin Reed at King Spry, their proposal is the least expensive. Just saying.
It is, but they also refer to us as a school district in their document, not as a township.
Yeah, that's picky.
I am picky of that stuff, but it doesn't exactly inspire a whole lot of confidence.
Well, we could, I don't know, I just think it's several thousands of dollars less, so that would be my thought. Anyway, so, does anyone else have a, have a preference? Hearing none, then I would move that we pick Kevin Reed at King Spry.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
And the other thing that was, other item that was tabled from the 20th of October is awarding for our community center site civil engineering and landscaping architecture. It was proposed that Pickering Courts in Somerson be awarded the site civil engineering contract, and Gilmore Associates the planning and landscape architecture contract. Any further discussion on this?
No, but I'd like to make a motion to move forward.
For both of them?
Yes.
Alright, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none?
I just wanted, Dan, go ahead.
I would still like to see an RFP for this. I understand the arguments made, especially with Pickering Courts, that they've done this before, but I feel like it's due diligence to have it done, to have an RFP done. That's all.
Okay.
I agree with Dan.
Okay.
I can say, since I wasn't here and I'm sort of the tiebreaker, I did reach out to speak to Dave directly to learn what the protocol was specifically for professional services. He, I was shared that using our former engineering services, that this didn't, you know, those types of things did not need an RFP. I also then asked what the timeline would be or how it would be impacted. And Dave, you said you were going to share some of that with me when we talked tonight.
Yeah, and again, I think I alluded to that last time. I think we're going to probably lose 30 to 60 days, you know, two months or so, or we do go through the RFP process and selecting. So, you know, time is of the essence here. If we're looking to try to keep with the schedule and move forward, that's probably where our 30 to 60 days, that would my assumption would be.
So if it's awarded tonight, let me just understand, if it's awarded tonight, they can begin and?
If it's awarded tonight, we would issue a notice to proceed this by the end of this week.
Otherwise?
Not tomorrow. I would notify the engineer that they, once the contract has been executed, and I think there's a copy in the folder tonight, if it's signed, then they receive notice to proceed, and they would start their work. They'd be invited to the status call with the architect on Thursday afternoon to participate and begin the process. So, you know, that's where we would be starting immediately.
In terms of a work timeline and hitting into the weather, then this allows things to accelerate rather than getting?
Yeah, I mean, we would start, we would, you know, they would schedule, start to schedule their work. I do have rough, you know, rough schedule from the, from Pickering regarding, you know, they would start the preliminary sketch, you know, it'd be, you know, 30 days for reviews and approvals. Probably by the start of early next year, because they're like six to eight weeks, maybe at the end of this year due to holiday, maybe January, they'd be starting on the site civil work on the plans moving forward for the courts and for the building itself.
Okay.
So.
So, and the, now everybody is aware of what they put out as bid as well, right? Because every, you can, it's now public knowledge.
That was a concern with Mr. Havers, who submitted the proposal, as well as Judy Stern-Golstein of Gilmore, because of their planning number as well. Both of those were read and became public record.
But we're still, we're in with protocol in terms of doing professional services. This isn't out of the ordinary?
No, it's not out of the ordinary at all.
Okay, and I'm fine with my vote. I just wanted to clarify all those things.
No.
Thank you.
Alright, do you have a question in a second?
I do have an additional comment. I just wanted to make very clear that even though legally we don't have to go for an RFP, which is the protocol that Supervisor Santa Cecilio is referring to, it's out of an abundance of transparency that I believe that we should go out for RFPs, particularly when it comes to anything related to one of the largest expenditures that we're going to be dealing with over the next couple of years. And that's why I plan on voting against this.
I appreciate that. These are known entities, however. Pickering Courts has done our site engineering, and we would be reinventing and spending a lot more money to do it. We've worked with these folks in the past, we know the other engineers in Bucks County who would do this work, and they're a fine group of people. And moreover, like I said, they know the work. Similarly with Judy Stern-Golstein, she's been our landscape architect for years, and she does great work, and there's no reason to, you know, reinvent the wheel. This is nothing, not transparent, this is just smart business. So there's a motion and a second, I'm going to call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Two nays?
Nay.
Okay.
You have a question, yes?
Alright, next item is new business, bond refinancing.
I think Jamie Doyle is on the screen.
Yes, Jamie. Jamie, you're on.
We read your presentation, Jamie.
Wonderful. Would you like me to screen share as well?
No, I don't think it's, does anybody want to see the documents again on screen?
No.
I'm getting, I'm getting negatives, so.
They all have it in their packet, Jamie.
Go ahead and proceed then. If you look at page one of my handout, I always like to start off talking a little bit about interest rates. And if you look in the lower right-hand corner, long-term fixed rates continue to hover near all-time lows. Those all-time lows were set in August of 2020, so it's a great time to be considering a refinancing such as this one. If you turn to page number three, it's your 2017 bond issue that we're discussing this evening. We're coming up on the call date of that issue, which is April 1 of 2022. And while that sounds far away, it is time to get started with the planning for that. And this will have bank-qualified interest rates. I'm jumping to that bottom section on page number three, meaning 10 million or less per calendar year. Gets you the lowest possible rate, which is bank-qualified, and it gets you the shortest possible call feature, which is five years. If you look at page number four, you'll see your existing debt portfolio, your 2017 bonds that we're discussing this evening, and your 2020 note. Page five is a sample motion for your consideration if or when you'd like to authorize the financing team to get the paperwork in order to accomplish the refunding that we're going to go over in a minute. I did have a blank for bond counsel, so if I understood your conversation correctly, you would fill King Spry in there, if that is your wish. And you will notice that it suggests a minimum net savings target of $178,000, which is roughly 2% of the principal that would be refunded. And that's not a rule, it's not a law, it's a historic benchmark, but that's what we're suggesting for the minimum. You're not setting a maximum, it's our job to save you every dollar that we possibly can on this opportunity. And you'll also notice that that motion suggests option two. We looked at two options at the committee level, and I will go over those both with you in a minute, but I believe option two is what is being recommended. Timeline-wise, there on page five, we had that initial discussion with Ways and Means. This evening would be the authorization to proceed with the motion above, if you're so inclined. We would be back at your December 21 voting meeting with said paperwork in order and the debt-incurring resolution for your consideration. That would position us to actually lock in interest rates via competitive internet auction as early as January 6. And that, that's the important date to you, when you lock the interest rates and lock the savings in, you know, they don't change after that point in time. And then settlement would occur around mid-February. And we're allowed to settle in advance of that April call date legally. So to look at the two options, they're summarized on page number six. And in option one, we estimated the savings at the bottom of column five at about $435,847. We're always a little conservative this early on in the process. And if you start at the top of column five and work your way down, it's roughly level savings in each of the remaining years of the issue. We're not extending the debt at all, we're simply proposing to replace the old higher rates with today's nearly all-time low rates. You'll also notice up above in box one, in this savings structure, the present value savings are just over $346,000. In option two, it's the exact same refunding, only there's minimal savings in the first two years. So fiscal year ending 2022 and 2023 have minimal savings, and then each of the remaining years of the issue, the savings are spread out in an equal fashion, so it's a slightly higher number each year for the rest of the issue. And on a future value basis, at the bottom of column seven, you can see that's about $452,000 of net savings. But again, going up top to box number two, on a present value basis, it's about six of one, half dozen of the other. It doesn't matter how you take your savings, when you present value it back to today's dollars, the answer is about the same. So again, I believe the committee landed on option two for their recommendation. To walk through the mechanics, which is the rest of the pages, on page eight, there's all of your 2017 bonds. If you did nothing, you'd continue to make the payments on page eight. You currently in column three have rates locked in that range from a 2% on the short end to a 3.6% on the long end, and you're slated to make your final payment on October 1 of 2041. Page nine just shows how much money we need to pay off all the old 2017 bonds, principal and interest, on that April 1 call date. And page 10 shows you with the estimated rates in column three, which range from a 1.38% to a 2.81%. That's how we arrive in option one, at that savings number. Again, that was about $435,000 with that savings structure. And more importantly, page 11 for option two, again in column eight, that's the minimal savings in the first two years, and then the savings spread equally over the remaining years for a total of $452,000 future value dollars. And that one, when you take the savings and divide it by the amount of principal we're refunding, you're at 5.08%. So this is a pretty healthy opportunity. Again, the historic benchmark is 2%, and you're at, you're at 5% conservatively right now. So I will pause there. I know that was a lot of information, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Okay. Questions, anyone?
You did receive a memo from the Ways and Means Committee?
Mm-hmm.
Indicating option two.
I'm hearing silence, like no questions. So are we ready to entertain the motion? It's all, she wrote it out for us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. The motion would be that we authorize our administration to work with PFM Financial Advisors as financial advisor, and King Spry as the bond counsel, and our solicitor to proceed with the refinancing of the outstanding general obligations bond, series 2017, with a minimum net savings target of $178,000 or 2% via competitive internet auction, as shown in option two.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you, have a great evening.
Thank you.
Alright, next item on the agenda is the budget presentation. No, that's not wrong.
No, you have the agreement.
It's wrong, it's wrong. Agreement for professional services. We received this information in October, and now it's up for approval, engaging at Ebenbach for another two years? Two years?
Yeah, 24 equal payments, so 24 months.
Is there a motion to approve this?
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Alright, now budget presentation.
Yes. This evening, up on the screen, you will see something that we're referring to as Budget in Brief. This is a document that Ken Wallace, the Township Finance Officer, has found from many of the other municipalities across the country are using as a way to communicate the budget. Our budget is probably close to 90 pages in total, and this is a nice way to summarize it and condense it. We worked with our budget analyst and our assistant manager in putting this document together, and I've handed all the board members the document. As the board knows, the goals set forth for the '22 budget include accelerating our road maintenance and bridge maintenance, building the park and rec community center, and ensuring that funding of future pension obligations is met. As the board knows, we participated with our Ways and Means Committee and staff and all the department heads on a very vigorous six-series public budget work sessions. The budget at a glance shows the balanced budget for the township, and focuses on the main elements of the capital spending, our operating revenues and expenditures. We show here in the circle diagram, the major capital spending from '21 and '22 in the various areas where expenditures occurred. We will see an increased capital spending in '22, which is going to be offset by grants as well as fund reserves. And we are forecasting throughout the budget, as the board knows, through 2026. We bring those items forward to meet the goals for the township. Again, we are showing the '21 and '22 operations graphs. The top one shows our revenues of $13 million, and expenditures are from the '21, and revenues in '22 of $12.9 million. And total operations expenses for '21 at $12.3, and '22 of $12.9. And the graphs identify all of the areas where the spending will be. One of the things we're showing is a comparison in this budget is the, where we sit compared to other municipalities when it comes to our, for the amount for our residents, based on the average assessed value of a home in Doylestown Township, that although we will be increasing taxes, we, we will be, for our roads and bridges specifically, we still fall in the middle of other municipalities in our area. The, and I can go through the details of those numbers in a minute, but.
We don't need to know the details of other.
You have all the other, yeah, you know, just our funds.
We're right there in the middle.
We're in the middle, where we'll be for 2022 is shown. And if adopted, the preliminary budget will hang for 20 days, and final adoption will occur at your board meeting on December 21st. And of course, the document is available for review here at the building during normal business hours, as well as on our website, under finance, under departments and finance. Does anyone have any questions regarding the Budget in Brief or the document itself?
Well, we've all spent hours on this.
Yeah.
We've all spent hours in meetings on this. Ways and Means has spent hours, and Township Administration has spent hours on it. And this is like a four-page brief, but this is the budget. So we'll entertain a motion to hang the budget for 2022.
I'll make a motion to hang the budget, and just to comment that I love this Budget in Brief. I think it was very well done.
Thank you, Ken.
Yeah.
I'll second that, and ditto what Ryan just said. This is really nice. I did have a question, though, about the Budget in Brief. Questica has, I believe they have a really nice graphic package. Do we know whether that this is something that will come out of that in the future?
I would defer to Ken Wallace, but my guess is probably.
Sorry, Ken.
My guess is probably going to be yes, that whatever, I know that's the budgeting and forecasting software, so that we purchase it.
Training yet, as far as that is concerned? So this is something that was born of me attending a GFOA webinar for budget presentations, and they were talking about budget in briefs. And a lot of these budget in briefs are, you know, from municipalities as large as, you know, the city of San Francisco, down to small municipalities in Texas. So I brought it to the budget analyst's attention, and we kicked it around as far as that was concerned, and it took fruition when we went to the township manager, and we introduced it to her, and she liked it. But as far as that is concerned, as far as Questica is concerned, this is something that we'll be exploring with them.
Okay, great.
Okay? Alright, thank you very much.
This is great, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. Alright, there's a motion and a second, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. That's five and oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, land development for the Doylestown Hospital Children's Village.
If I may, to resolve the disagreement that the planning commission may have had as to whether this is an amended final or preliminary as final, the land development plan. plan, I will cede to the Planning Commission because frankly, it doesn't make any difference. But in any event, Doylestown Hospital has filed a plan submitted with the purpose of making new improvements to the campus at the hospital, and is being considered a preliminary as final plan. It proposes the construction originally of 45,205 square feet. We've been advised that there will no longer be a second floor, so the square footages will be reduced, obviously almost in half. It is replacing the daycare facility, was destroyed during the tornado that swept through as part of Doylestown Township. It is being proposed to be constructed on the hospital site identified as Bucks County Tax Parcels 9-9-32-3 and 9-9-33. The plans before you were prepared by Boucher &amp; James, Inc., were dated October 4, 2021, and were last revised October 11, 2021. Your Planning Commission recommended approval on November 9, 2021, subject to certain conditions. If the Board of Supervisors were so inclined, you could approve this application as a preliminary as final land development plan for the project, and I have a series of conditions whenever you're ready to hear them. But I do want to, I added some conditions before I knew that the size of the drug was going to be reduced, or not drawing, the structure by removing the second floor. So some of the comments from the Planning Commission related to traffic and safety plan may no longer be relevant, and I'll let Kelly address those.
Welcome, Ms. McGowan.
Jeff, thank you very much. Kelly McGowan, representing Doylestown Health with respect to the Doylestown Hospital campus this evening. As Jeff mentioned, we are requesting a preliminary final, amended preliminary final approval. Just one correction that I'd like to make, because I think it's probably important to the discussion. The existing, or I should say prior, it's been demolished, Children's Village facility was approximately 20,000 square feet. The proposed replacement, the first floor, is approximately 33,000 square feet. That second floor was kind of a partial second floor, so that's how we hit originally the 45,000. But as you mentioned, through the development of the plans and the programming, that second floor has been removed. There is a bit of additional space, as I noted in that first floor, to allow some additional potential for an additional classroom perhaps, but that is to serve the Children's Village use, the daycare use only, with no additional users in that building anymore. So with that said, as Jeff mentioned, we had a protracted discussion with the Planning Commission, all good comments with respect to, you know, the parking, some of the access. We did go back to the 2016 parking studies that were done, and that was done in connection with the Pavilion III and kind of some of the development. That was at a time, performed at a time when Children's Village was operating, and at that time, all of our parking studies, our traffic study that was completed at that time, did show the efficiency of the site, including that area, including Children's Village. I'll also note that there were some traffic improvements, or I should say road improvements done, in connection with the most recent Pavilion development that was completed. So we believe for those reasons, the replacement of the existing structure for an existing use should not require an additional traffic study or any additional improvements. Otherwise, we have reviewed the conditions, we have reviewed the review letters. They are all will comply letters, so we would respectfully ask the board to consider the approval.
They're all will comply, you got to go--
If I may, compliance with any and all decisions rendered by the Doylestown Township zoning hearing board related to the construction of the daycare facility and hospital facility related to parking size, compliance with the Bucks County Planning Commission report dated November 9, 2021, compliance with the Panoni Review Letter, Planning Letter dated October 22, 2021, compliance with the Panoni Engineering Letter dated October 20, 2021, compliance with the Panoni Traffic Engineering Review dated October 20, 2021, compliance with the Michael Baker International Review Letter dated October 20, 2021. In addition, the applicants requested a waiver on revisions of Section 153-20, point capital E, related to the need to conduct traffic study. You'll note the basis for that in Mr. Reese's letter to the Township dated October 25, 2021. So if you're inclined to waive that, you need to let me know, because that'll be a condition of approval. And also, I had included whether they needed to do a safety plan because of the second floor in the IU. That may not be necessary. It's obviously up to the board. Also, there was a discussion that the Planning Commission said notwithstanding that the Planning Commission supported the waiver from the traffic study. They want to look at the traffic and parking patterns, but that may no longer be relevant because it's only one floor. receipt of all permits, many agencies having jurisdiction, including Conservation District, Doylestown Municipal Authority, and the like. Project shall be ADA compliant, funding execution of financial security agreements, and there will be one floor as of this approval. So I guess the supervisors need to decide whether or not, first of all, whether to grant the waiver for the traffic study, and number two, whether it needs to be a safety plan, and three, whether or not the conversation with the Planning Commission related to the parking and traffic patterns were necessary as part of this approval. So your pleasure.
What would the need for the safety plan be?
It was, I think, to my recollection, it was getting kids out of the second floor, which was going to be the IU facility.
It's not--
The original, that was the original issue, was that there were kids upstairs, and they were in wheelchairs.
It's not--
So it's, that's mute now.
That's gone.
That's gone. And the, what was the--
The other one was the traffic and parking patterns.
Well, traffic, is that the traffic study? Is that what we're--
Well, they're asking for a waiver from that, but the Planning Commission said, well, if you waive that, we still want to have the Township take a look at the traffic and parking patterns.
That was huge when we were approving the expansion of the Doylestown Hospital, that the traffic patterns and ins and outs and where everything was really important. So I would like to us to keep an eye on what that is, what that looks like. I know our chief would probably like to know what the, especially when you're dealing with parents and their kids getting out of the car, it's like crazy stuff.
Yeah, and we're happy to do that. We were, as we explained to the Planning Commission, it's going to be a similar, similar or the same, now that we're going back to the first floor, a drop-off situation that as you had in the prior Children's Village. You know, we did point out there is the direct access to the access road, so we'll provide that with our agreement.
We'll provide any approval, submit to the Township for review.
Yes.
Does that make sense?
That makes sense. We will also be providing in our revised submission, obviously, an updated building and all of our updated calculations that will fall within the zoning relief.
Okay. All right, so with that addition and caveat, is there a motion to approve preliminary and final land development?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Board members, thank you.
Good to go. Thank you. Thank you.
Kelly, I assume you accept those conditions?
We accept the conditions.
You almost escaped without me asking that question.
Sorry. Bad. Okay, next item is the waste program. They want us to contribute to the county-wide waste, hazardous waste program.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Pretty obvious, guys.
Yes.
Should we do it?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So be it. Pension advisory contract, Vanguard defined benefit plan. I'm sorry, you've all seen it, read it.
Mm-hmm.
I only have--
We all studied it closely.
Is everyone okay with it? I only have one thing. And I know we're not supposed to be wordsmithing or changing anything, but paragraph 15 arbitration, I don't think we should be doing the American Arbitration Association, and I don't think it should be in Philadelphia. It should be in Bucks County, and we should file the rules of the Revised Uniform Arbitration Act, July 19, 2019.
Why don't you provide that to, I don't think that'll be a problem for them. Why don't you provide that specific language?
I'll provide you a paragraph to you. To you?
Okay, we'll deal with it between Stephanie and I, and prove as subject to that modification.
For you guys who don't, American Arbitration Association is a service, and they charge. I mean, we could pick our own arbitrator. We don't need to go through a service that charges all kinds of incredible fees to do a service that we can, and buy it in Phila, and buy it in Bucks County. We don't have to go to Philadelphia for this stuff.
I agree. I'll make a motion with Barb's proposed change.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, I'll send you the language. There you go. All right, that's that, that's that. All right, Township Auditor Recommendation, Ken Wallace has attached his recommendation that we hire the firm, and Zelenkovsky, I get that right? Axelrod?
Yes.
LLC, for our auditors '21, '22, and '23. Is there a motion to approve Ken's recommendation?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thanks. And I'm getting to the end of this. Pebble Ridge Woodridge Sewer Project, payment of $111,310.94. And you need, anyone need to speak to that?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
5-0. My, that's that. And then, request to send equipment. We're sending this Dodge Charger. Is that one of your vehicles, 2013 Dodge Charger, one of those fake, like, police cars that you can't tell is a police car? Because the--
Fake police car?
Like the hidden police vehicle. Is that one, that's what we're sending to auction?
I believe it is.
What?
I believe it is.
Oh, I love that car.
Do you want to buy it?
I took, I took--
You can go to the auction and get it, Barb.
It took me years to spot it, and now you're getting rid of it. You've seen these cars, like, you can barely see Doylestown Township.
They're stealth.
They're very, yeah.
And it's such a cool-looking car. It's too bad.
We'll have another one for you.
Okay. I'll make a motion to, for the request to send to auction.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All right, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Okay, the zoning hearing board application at this mountain construction. I'm not inclined to--
By way of background--
Opposition?
Background, previously, the board decided not to take a position on the prior application, and there's less houses this time, so the reason why it's backed here is because one of the neighbors who owned the property was being developed objected because he didn't want the houses in this particular part of the township to be less expensive than the ones he was trying to sell. So the derelict been sold, and the applicant, developer came back with a lesser number of houses, and I all think the staff had a problem, so.
Now, my recommendation is to leave it to the zoning hearing board, as we did before.
All right. Is everybody else okay with that?
Yep.
Okay. So be it. All right, next item on the agenda is Treasurers' Report for November 16, 2021. It was sent to everyone electronically. Is there a motion to approve it?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then finally, the Bills List for November 16, 2021.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm not, I'm going to dispense with the announcements. Any other business? All right, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Yes, Happy Thanksgiving.
Oh, yeah. Guess what? There's documents to be signed.